I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order for could please. Supervisor McCarthy, would you leave us an invocation please, sir?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, it concerns residents of Frederick County. We pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keep in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. We ask your blessings in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chairman, would you offer your lease and a pledge, please, sir?
Would you stand and face our flag with a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda, I think we had one change?
One change?
Two, if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The resolution on I-81, we're proposing for consent, but if the board is willing, I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our HR Director, perhaps as number two under county officials, or 2A if we want to call it that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Heard the proposed changes. How would the board like to handle the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Question. Excuse me.
I move for acceptance.
For approval is amended. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Adopted agenda is amended. Citizen comments? I don't think anyone signed up.
No one, Mr. Chairman.
Ma'am? Consent agenda, are any proposed changes?
Just the addition of that resolution.
Number eight. Resolution on 81. How would the board like to handle the consent agenda?
Question to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Question to approve as amended?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? We'll adopt the consent agenda as amended. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any? Bring us to county officials. Please, have a good night. Officer Vidal, would you join us up front, please, sir? July 2018 Employee of the Month, John P. Vidal. Correctional Officer John P. Vidal did save the life of fellow Correctional Officer Daniel Largens. On July 10th, 2018, Officer Largens was demented when he began to choke. He walked hastily towards the back of the annex control room, gaining the attention of Officer Vidal, and trying to communicate that he was choking by using hand gestures. Officer Vidal immediately assessed the situation and began to apply hindstand techniques. He gave three quick thrusts using the hind lift maneuver and successfully cleared Officer Largens' airway. Officer Largens gratitude for Officer Vidal's actions displayed when he speaks of the situation. Frederick County Board of Supervisors recognizes John Vidal as Frederick County Employee of the Month for July 2018, and extends gratitude to John for his outstanding performance and dedication, and we wish him continued success in his future endeavors. Please join me in thanking and congratulating Officer Vidal. Thank you. Yes, sir. August 2018 Employee of the Month, Gene D. Boyce. Correctional Officer Gene D. Boyce has managed the implementation of a major security system upgrade at the Regional Detention Center over the last year. The facilities endured significant issues during the project, which included retrofitting three buildings with new fiber, cameras, control panels, and all-related computer software and hardware. He became instrumental in assisting the contractors and led them to keep the project moving forward while ensuring the work was done correctly. He works relentlessly to confirm the work is completed as expected, and his primary focus remains ensuring the safety and concerns of all staff are addressed. Frederick County Board of Supervisor recognizes Gene Boyce as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for August of 2018, and extends gratitude to Gene for his outstanding performance and dedicated service, and we wish him continued success in his future endeavors. Please join me in thanking Gene and congratulating him for his job well done. More for you folks, Gene.
Good job. Goodbye to my students.
Oh, well, he's always at the jail for meetings, too, so.
I am. He was one of my junior high students.
Yes.
A long time ago. And he turned out well.
It's always fun, isn't it? All right, I think that brings us to committee business.
No?
Let me have a presentation from Substance Abuse Coalition, welcome.
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I want to first thank the board for your continued support of the Northern Shenandoah Valley Substance Abuse Coalition and our Northwest Regional Adult Drug Treatment Court. I wanted to provide you with an update this evening on what we're experiencing locally with overdoses, and also an update on our drug treatment court efforts. So I'll start off with an update on our local overdoses, and this data, just to remind you, is brought together by the Northwest Virginia Regional Drug and Gang Task Force, which is monitored by the state police. As you can see, between 2012 and 2013 is really when we saw our increase locally. We went from one overdose death to 21 overdose deaths, and this includes the area that includes the Lord Fairfax Health District, so all six localities. We decreased in 2015 and 16 at 30 overdose deaths, and then, as you can see, last year we increased up to 40 overdose deaths locally. We attribute that to the increase that we saw in fentanyl locally, so a lot of the heroin was being laced with fentanyl. Almost all of the labs that were sent off came back positive for fentanyl. As you can see, this year, however, we decreased down to 15 overdose deaths. One, I will remind you, is too many, but we are down to 15 this year compared to 33 deaths at the exact same time last year, so we have seen a significant decrease in overdose deaths locally. In addition, we monitor our non-fatal overdoses. Again, the increase between 2012 and 2013. Last year, we were at the most that we've seen to date, which was at 190 non-fatal overdoses, and this year we stand at 116 overdoses, non-fatal overdoses, compared to 149 at the same time last year. Most of these were because of Narcan, that these folks were saved, and I appreciate that the Frederick County Sheriff's Office is now carrying Narcan, and they have had a number of these saves that are accounted for. Now, while we are seeing a decrease overall in the opioid overdoses, the problem still remains, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit about just the five-year trend that law enforcement sees, and as you can see from the previous slides, we were in the fifth year last year of the opioid epidemic. Law enforcement in our area typically sees drugs come in five-year trends. Last year was the fifth year. We knew that we would see a new drug trend come in play, and that's exactly what has happened. So we have seen an increase in stimulant use, cocaine, crack, methamphetamine, MDMA ecstasy, and also amphetamines. From a user's perspective, they assume, or there's this perception by someone who is using substances, that methamphetamine or cocaine or these stimulants are safer alternatives to opioids. They are seeing more of their friends and loved ones around them die from overdoses from opioids, so they're turning to what they believe to be something that's safer. From a dealer's perspective, they were seeing individuals who were being prosecuted on a federal level and put away for many years because they were linking those overdose deaths back to the dealer, and they were prosecuting them on a federal level, so they are now moving over to dealing cocaine and these other stimulants. Some studies suggest that individuals who misuse stimulants do not have a preferred drug of choice. The thing that I always tell folks is that, once someone is using heroin, it's not about the drug, it's about the high at that point, and if you take it one step further, it's about a mental health issue that they are trying to cope with. So, however, many do have a diagnosable substance use disorder. So, again, I just want to reiterate, while we have seen a decrease in overdoses from opioids, we continue to see an increase in stimulant use now, and the drug of choice has just changed. An update on the Northwest Regional Adult Drug Treatment Court, a reminder that we started in August of 2016. To date, we have served 40 clients. Twenty-eight of those cases came out of Frederick County. We have 25 clients currently in the program. Five clients have successfully completed the program. Eight have unsuccessfully been discharged from the program, and I would just point out that, just because it's an unsuccessful discharge, we do not see that as a failure, because each treatment attempt is an attempt at treatment, and often it takes individuals four, five, six attempts before they are successful. We've had two deaths. One was a motor vehicle accident, and we did have one overdose death, and then we are continuing to take ongoing referrals. We have two new clients who are starting in the program next week. I want to go back to the successful completions in the program. The individual that you see standing there with Judge Randy Bryant is Jeremy Athie. He successfully completed our program in 12 months. He graduated on November 15th of 2017. He was one of the first to successfully complete the program. Jeremy is a very positive story because he came full circle. He, you know, started in the Drug Treatment Court program, got out, and then was hired by Northwestern Community Services Board to be a peer recovery specialist. So he is now a peer recovery specialist with Northwestern and giving back to the clients who are in our Drug Treatment Court. So these are one of the success stories that we wanted to share with you and something that we hope to see a lot more of. Some of our current projects, we were fortunate to receive a $91,000 grant from the global, it's Rotary Global Grant, and this is going to allow us to do the Give Me a Reason Drug Prevention Initiative. This has really three goals in mind. The first goal is to provide parents with these saliva-based drug kits. They can use these in the comfort of their home and get results within 10 minutes. The idea is that these kits will be placed on the refrigerator or somewhere within the house, and even if they're never used, they are still sending students a message that "My parent can drug screen me," and that will give them a reason to say no to drugs, and will also give parents a reason to be in the know. So the first part of this is to identify substance use among our youth. The second part of this is to train our local school counselors on what's called ESPERT. It is screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment. So if a parent tests their child and they come out positive, the parent can then voluntarily go into the school system and talk to the counselor and say, "My child tested positive. I would like for them to be screened by the school counselor for ESPERT." The counselor can then do an ESPERT screening and determine if there needs to be a brief intervention, or if that student needs to be referred to treatment based on where they are in their substance use. Are they just experimenting, or are they further along and actually have a substance use disorder? The third part of this is the referral to treatment. So identify, intervene, refer to treatment. The grant is allowing us to pay for students who don't have otherwise the means to pay for treatment to go into intensive outpatient treatment programs. We plan to start this in January of next year, and we're beginning it in Frederick County, so we're really looking forward to this program. Other current projects, we are doing a monthly clinical lunch and learn session, which is being held at the hospital. This is bringing together local treatment providers and talking about important topics that are impacting individuals with substance use disorders. At our last one on Friday, we had about 38 local treatment providers in attendance, so we've gotten a really great response to this program. Our peer recovery specialist program, we are partnering with the Winchester Rescue Mission. We have a peer recovery specialist who is going in bi-monthly to talk to the guests at the Winchester Rescue Mission, and then today we finalized our plans with the Watts Program. We will have a peer recovery specialist, actually two, a male and a female, so it's gender-specific, going in weekly to the Watts Program, and we will also have a roving AA meeting each week, wherever Watts is being placed at the different churches, they'll have an AA meeting there for their guests. In addition, one of our goals is to speak with the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center and start offering peer recovery specialist programming there for individuals who are going to be transitioning back into the community to really look at that reentry piece, so we're discussing that with them. The DCJS TIPS Pilot Project, this was a grant that the state received, and our area was chosen as the pilot area for the project. It creates a data sharing platform, so all of the data that we receive locally, that the agencies receive, this will be one location where the agencies can really identify trends and target our responses based on those trends. The community outreach events that we continue to hold annually, we have the Addicted to Hope Rally coming up this Saturday in front of Hanley High School, although if it rains, we're going to be in the gym. The United Capital Run for Recovery will be on November 17th, out at Rose Hill Park in beautiful Frederick County, and the Recovery's Got Talent Event is in March of 2019, so we continue to hold these events to help to overcome the stigma of addiction, which we all know prevents a lot of people from asking for help. So that is my update to you. I appreciate, again, your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, if anyone? Thank you very much. I can tell you how much we appreciate what you're doing in our community.
Thank you so much.
Well done. Thank you. All right. That will bring us to 2B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce Michael Marciano, our new Human Resources Director. Mike comes to us from a law firm in northern Virginia where he was the HR Director. He does have a law degree, which hopefully he won't have to use too often, but he's been with us going on three weeks, I guess, and hasn't run screaming from the building yet, so we're trying to show him around, get him in touch with all of our departments and facilities and personnel and some of the nuances of local government, but I don't know if Mike wants to say hello, maybe.
Welcome, sir. Thank you very much. Very excited to have you onboard.
Well, thank you. It's a pleasure being here.
You have to get really physical with it.
You really have to bend that.
Yeah, there you go.
Part of the excitement, I think, for me at this opportunity is, for the first time since 2000, we moved to Virginia to be able to work in the area I live, and instead of running into northern Virginia each day, and there's, I keep thinking, as we're changing our whole lifestyle and trying to take a little bit of care of me and spending more time with my wife, and, you know, this is such a wonderful opportunity, and I thank you for that opportunity. I will do my best to, you know, earn your trust every day. My focus is to learn my audience. I've got a lot more learning to do, but people have been very gracious, impatient, and I just thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Very excited. Okay. Bring us to committee appointments. Extension leadership, are we ready yet?
We will be ready in two weeks.
Got it. Planning Commission, I have an applicant, and we'll hope to do that next meeting. General Valley Agency on Aging, I think we do have an application. How would the board like to handle that one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the application of Richard Beaver, General Area Agency on Aging Board.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion? Anyone? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Certainly appreciate Mr. Beaver joining us. Twinnyland Sanitary District, not yet?
Not ready.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, Back Creek?
No, sir.
Okay. And the Board of Equalization, eligible for reappointment? Is he interested in being reappointed? Did we check?
I have not contacted him. I'm not aware that anyone else has. We can do that, though, when we will.
But let's take that step. It's next month, so we're good, I think. All right. That will bring us to committee business. Finance Committee, I think, were there any actionable items?
Yes, sir, there were.
All right, sir.
So the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, October 17th, at 8:00 AM. The first item requiring board action is that the Parks and Recreation Director requested a general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $174,185 from proffer funds. This amount represents funds needed for a restroom at Northwest Sherrando Park. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Roger Dunn.
Another comment's been made that $174,000 is a lot of money, and I had a discussion with our Parks and Rec Director earlier today, and just so that you know, the building itself is $113,000. You have a foundation for another 11, and you have $34,000 utilities plus a contingency fee, so the actual number's a lot less than that, and knowing Parks and Rec's efforts, they will do all they can to go and bring this number underneath what this $174,000 is. So it's about $174,000 cash out of hand, but it's just a ceiling for what we can work with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Are we ready? Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Item number two, the Social Services Director provided an update on Medicaid expansion. As the board may well remember, during our budget process, we set aside 43% of the $1 million, which was $430,000. Mrs. Green has asked for a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $290,450.50. This amount represents the expected state and federal revenue, which the county will be reimbursed to offset the $430,000, and in this appropriation this evening, we will be appropriating the revenue side as well as the expenditure side, and you can tell from your packet that some of the employees have currently been added, but they will continue working on that as we go through the process. So I would make a motion, as the committee recommends, and that would be to approve the appropriation of $290,450.50.
Heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a question. So is this $290,000, is that strictly appropriating funds that will be reimbursed, or is there any local funds that will be part of this appropriation?
We had set aside a contingency for $430,000, so this will actually offset the $430,000 of local dollars. So these are actually federal and state funds that will come back and reimburse Frederick County for those costs.
Okay. So the other money that's required in order to fulfill this, has that been fully appropriated at this point, or is it still sort of setting aside to be appropriated at some point in the future?
Yes, we still have it set aside, which is the $122,384.50. Some of the positions will not be added, maybe until December, January, so it may be because of the staffing being done at a later time that we may be able to offset some of that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment. I'm okay with appropriating federal and state funds that will reimburse the county for expenditures that we have, but I'm fundamentally opposed to allowing either state or federal government to impose unfunded mandates on the localities, which forces us into raising revenues to offset their unpopular legislation that they want to pass. Harry Truman once said, "The buck stops here," but it seems like with the federal and state government, it's passed on to us. So while I'm okay with approving this, I'm fundamentally opposed to having our citizens saddled with the direct payment of something that is egregious as this unfunded mandate that they imposed on us. I just wanted to make that clear. I don't think this is right.
Thank you, sir. Anyone further?
Mr. Chairman, I might just add that we did include in our legislative agenda to ask for full reimbursement of the Medicaid. Whether we will end up getting that or not, it still remains to be seen, but we are making the attempts.
Anyone else? Are you ready? Supervisor McCarthy?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Trout?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, I might just add that there are other items that the Finance Committee looked at that, at some point, will initiate a full board work session. The OPEB Trust, our Finance Director spoke to us about that, and that is to look at long-term liabilities regarding retirement healthcare benefits. So at some point, once the Finance Committee has gotten through all the questioning and received back all of the information, we will attempt to schedule a full board work session to go through that process.
You're good. Thank you.
That would conclude my report.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. That will bring us, I believe, to board liaison reports. Are there any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Supervisor Trout?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frederick Water Board of Directors met on October 16th of 2018. The meeting started with Dick Helm, the Executive Director of the Frederick Winchester Service Authority, presenting an update on the Green Energy Plant. The Green Energy Plant is a cogeneration component recently constructed at the Opeken Water Reclamation Facility, the Route 7 wastewater plant. The Green Energy Plant accepts high-strength waste from our food manufacturers like HB Hood and Valley Protein, and while treating the waste generates energy. While working out the kinks, the energy generator is currently in operation and producing energy, which reduces the quantity of electricity to be purchased from the electric companies. Frederick Water is responsible for half of the project's $50 million debt at this time. The town of Stevens City and Frederick Water have agreed and approved a final term sheet that paves the way for entry into a settlement agreement. Both parties agree that the final term sheet and contemplated settlement agreement will resolve the differences between the parties in a manner that is in the interest of both citizens of the town of Stevens City and the customers, ratepayers of Frederick Water. The settlement agreement not only resolves those issues raised in the pending litigation by and between the parties in the Circuit Court of Frederick County, but also creates a binding agreement between the parties to memorialize and accomplish the long-term goals and interests of both the town of Stevens City and Frederick Water as it relates to water and sewer. Part of those interests include for the town of Stevens City, an assurance of the availability and delivery of water to its citizens at a favorable rate in perpetuity, and for Frederick Water, the ownership of a water resource to allow it to continue to serve its customers and ratepayers. And I believe that is it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Wells?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm a liaison member of our Frederick County Parks and Recreation Department, and we have two members that I see back in the back, employees for Frederick County, and they do a great job. We have a lot of volunteers, but they have provided me with a short report, which I'd like to read to you because I think it's just fantastic. I get to see all these things on a monthly basis, but I think it's good to get it out to the public. The Parks and Recreation Commission presented the Steve Alfleck 2018 Youth Sports Coach of the Year to Kevin Arthur. I was at that meeting. Mr. Arthur has coached winter and summer basketball for multiple teams since 2010. This is the third year that they have done the Steve Alfleck Coach of the Year Award. There are over 300 volunteers in Frederick County Parks and Recreation Programs. 300, that's a lot of folks, and they are the key to the success, and we certainly appreciate them. Sports, Special Olympic Programs, those types of things. Before, we have the before and after-school recreation programs called Basic Rec, and it's offered at all of the elementary schools, averaging 354 participants in the morning and 356 participants in the afternoon. That's 710 children a day in the Basic Rec Program. Parks and Rec is offering a new event. This is called Spirits of the Valley. This is an adults-only program, which includes a meal, a glass of wine at Valerie Hill, walking tour of the historic Rose Hill Park. The program is in partnership with Valerie Hill Vineyard and Winery, the Museum of the Shenandoah Valley, and the Frederick County Parks and Rec. For more information, you can get on their website. There are two annual running events coming up. The Fifth Battlefield Half Marathon will be held on November 3rd. The 20th Thanksgiving 5K will be held Thanksgiving morning, November 22nd, excuse me. The Thanksgiving 5K has become a tradition for many as they start their celebration of Thanksgiving in Frederick County. Notice, that's the day before, not the day after the turkey, right? Watching people run after they've had that big meal's no fun at all. Information- Information about all of Frederick County Parks and Recreation Programs, including registration information, can be found at www.fcprd.net. So please, take advantage of all the good things that are going on in Parks and Rec in Frederick County. Thank you, Jason and John. Thank you so much for all you do. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
All right, sir. Thank you. Any others? Anyone? That'll bring us to citizen comments. Anyone like to share anything with the board? Anyone? Last call? Public comment? Question? Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor McCarthy.
Thank you. I have two comments, both regarding exercising our civic duty as citizens. One is November 6 is Election Day, and I'd urge everyone who's eligible to vote to go out to the polls and vote this year, even if you haven't done it in a while. And if you have trouble getting to the polls, if you need a ride, there are services that will take you to the polls for free, and if you need to get information on that, you're free to call my office, and my staff will be happy to put you in touch with the folks that can get you to the polls for free this year. The other item is Supervisor Slaughter alluded to our legislative agenda that we adopted, I think it was at the last meeting. I would encourage all of our citizens to take a look at that legislative agenda, contact our state legislators, and urge them to make that a top priority, because these are the fundamental priorities for our county moving forward, and it's instrumental that we start getting some of these things put into place. So please take some time to make a phone call, send an email, send a letter to your state representatives to urge them to help us get those things passed on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Trout.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy, that was an excellent segue into what I wanted to talk about, so thank you. I mentioned this to you all in an email several months ago, but in the spring, I attended the VACO Conference, which is the Virginia Counties for Supervisors, and some of the supervisors in different counties in Virginia told me that they had methods in place to get feedback from their citizens regarding the budget and the budget process. A couple of them talked about mailers, another talked about like a Google form, an electronic format. So I would like to propose that we, as Frederick County, construct something to get feedback from our citizens regarding the budget, just kind of big-picture items, prior to heading into our budget work sessions in the beginning of the year, and so I was wondering if anyone on the board felt that that was a good idea, if we had any support for that.
I think it's actually a good idea. Chairman, where would we send that to?
We would ask admin to work on that and bring back some thoughts.
Let's do that.
Okay. Other thoughts, anyone?
The more public input we get is great. Sorry.
Okay.
Done.
All right. Supervisor Lofton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, Supervisor Trout provides a perfect segue for me to talk about feedback.
You guys rehearse this stuff?
We talk about feedback. Want to remind everyone again about our transportation forum taking place tomorrow night. Doors open, I believe, at 6 o'clock at the regional airport. We will have staff there. We will have VITAD officials there. We will have legislators there to go over the broad picture of all the transportation projects that are proposed in Frederick County, those that are just getting started, those that are on the wish list, and we hope to have as many people there as possible so that we can bring everybody up to speed on what is happening with transportation in Frederick County.
Yep.
Supervisor Dunn.
Mr. McCarthy, I concur with his suggestions on dealing with legislation, so if you do have concerns on legislative priorities which are outlined, I believe, on our web, please attend the meeting tomorrow night, let our citizen delegates and senators know what's occurring, and as Ms. Trout said, citizen input is important, so I'd encourage you all to hold some town hall meetings and talk to your citizens as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone? Mr. Chairman Lofton.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adjournment.
May I just adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank everyone for their participation.